¡Genial! ¡Tú y yo estamos aquí este domingo! ¡Estamos en una buena cama afuera! ¡Y es el comienzo de verano! ¡Acabamos de celebrar la fiesta de Ester! ¡Y estamos aquí para un emocionante concurso! Una oportunidad para escuchar el increíble anuncio de Dazir y hablar contigo sobre todos los temas que se relacionan con Guyana y cualquier otro tema que quieras preguntarle. Así que... Para comenzar, vamos a invitar a todos a sentarse mientras escuchamos el ancho ancho del Guayana seguido del ancho ancho del Guayaquil. Gracias por estar aquí, y les invito a que se descanse.
Buenas tardes, todos. Levanten sus manos mientras digo esta oración. Dios mío, que aquí estamos, reunidos, que te bendiga para guiarnos en todas nuestras conversaciones para que podamos humildemente construir una tierra donde el conocimiento sea libre, donde la mente no tenga miedo y la cabeza esté alta, y donde las palabras provienen de la profundidad de la verdad. Nos dé Dios tu ayuda y guía para que podamos lidiar justamente con las diversas causas que pueden venir a nosotras, dejando a todos los intereses privados, prejuicios y preferencias personales, para que el resultado de nuestras conversaciones sea la gloria de tu bendición, el mantenimiento de la religión, la preservación de la justicia, la seguridad, el honor y la felicidad del presidente y la paz y prosperidad de Estados Unidos. Nos dé Dios la visión para guiar para que todo el pueblo de esta tierra fría pueda entrar en el estado de amistad y unidad donde la vida es guiada hacia el camino de la comprensión y acción. Gracias.
Gracias, Mrs. Kayla. Por favor, hablen. Gracias. Para aquellos de ustedes que no saben quién soy, mi nombre es Melanie O'Cordes y me encanta el honor de ser la moderadora de este programa esta noche. Soy una hija nativa, hija de Guyana, específicamente, y una alumna de Presidente's College. Y así es, es Dazir. Así que todos los niños de PC aquí, ¡demos un aplauso! Saben, siempre decimos que los estudiantes de President's College van a cambiar a Guyana en un año u otro. Y estamos viviendo esa realidad hoy. Y así, en este momento voy a invitar a Mrs. Malaika a presentar a nuestro invitado, Gloria Jimmy.
Gracias, Melanie. Buenas tardes, todos. Mi nombre es Malaika Phillips Peters y es mi privilegio presentar a nuestros invitados de honor esta noche. También soy una alumna orgullosa de President's College, así que estoy aquí para apoyar nuestra carrera. Amanda O.R. Walton Dazir, LLM MP. Nacida en el pueblo de Linden en Miami, Dazir se ha marcado por una serie de roles pivotales que la han moldeado en la líder que es hoy. Atendiendo tanto la Escuela de McKinsey como el prestigioso President's College, graduó con honra de la Universidad de Guyana con un título de derecho en derecho. Luego continuó su viaje de excelencia académica, combinando el título de maestro con la distinción en la Ley de Maritima Internacional del prestigioso Instituto de Ley de Maritima Internacional en Montauk. Sus persuadiras académicas fueron reforzadas por un certificado de postgraduação en legislatura de la Universidad de Guyana y un certificado de educación legislativa legal postgradual de la Escuela de Derecho de Uwodin en Trinidad y Tobago, y varios otros certificados, como el certificado ejecutivo en liderazgo espacial, negocio y política del Escuela de Gestión Global de Thunderbird. Como profesional legal durante los últimos 20 años, la trayectoria profesional de Amanda es caracterizada por su liderazgo excepcional en el campo de la Ley de Maritima y Aviación. Ha servido como consejera legal a varias agencias gubernamentales y como director de una serie de asuntos estatales. Como Consejera General de la Autoridad Civil de Guyana, la JCAA, ella ha dirigido iniciativas transformadoras que elevaron el sector de aviación de Guyana internacionalmente, asegurando cumplir con las normas de seguridad estrangüentes establecidas por la Organización Civil de Aviación Internacional, la ICAO. Continúa siendo experta en temas legales de rastreos con la ICAO. Además de sus logros profesionales, Amanda es una madre devota y líder de la comunidad, profundamente basada en las tradiciones de familia y servicio. Es una amante de los exteriores y los artes. Su advocacy por el derecho de la clase pobre y trabajadora, su especial enfoque en el empoderamiento de la mujer y la joven y su dedicación inolvidable a la fortaleza de una democracia inclusiva exemplifican su compromiso con la construcción de un futuro mejor para todos los Guyanenses. Su compromiso con el empoderar a las mujeres como líderes resultó en la fundación de WISE. Mujeres en liderazgo, apoyo y empoderamiento. Una organización dedicada a proporcionar apoyo, recursos y advocacy para empoderar a las mujeres en la política. WISE aspira a asegurar que las mujeres prosperen en sus roles de liderazgo mientras priorizan su bienestar físico, emocional y mental. Como miembro de la Parlamentaria y Ministro de Asuntos Exteriores y Cooperación Internacional, Amanda continúa en la lucha contra la diplomacia y la participación global, aprovechando nuestra experiencia para moldear la política que avance los intereses de Guyana en el escenario mundial. Su liderazgo dentro del Partido Nacional de la Comisión de Congreso, el PNCR, como miembro ejecutivo, junto con su advocacy sin parar por la justicia social, económica y ambientalista, sirve como un inspirador de la esperanza para generaciones anteriores y futuras. La vida y el trabajo de Amanda Walton Dazir embodyen los valores de integridad, compasión y resiliencia. A través de su dedicación inolvidable a la justicia, diplomacia y empoderamiento de la comunidad, continúa inspirando el cambio positivo en Guyana. Todos, Amanda.
Buenas tardes, todos. Y muchas gracias por la introducción. Al final de la noche estaba preguntando quién estaba hablando. Y luego dijo Amanda, así que pensé que sí, sería yo. Y gracias a nuestro poderoso moderador, Melanie O'Cordes, uno de los malos legisladores de inmigración que encontraste aquí en la ciudad de Nueva York. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Veo a algunos de mis amigos del continente de África aquí. Muchas gracias por estar aquí, chicos. Y veo a algunos de mis amigos de Trinidad aquí. Gracias por estar aquí. Y gracias a mis hermanos y hermanas guyanes por la oportunidad. Veo a muchos de mis presidentes de la escuela. Así que gracias, esto es humilde. Uno podría pensar que tiende a acostumbrarse a hablar con la audiencia y se vuelve vieja después de un minuto, pero ver a la cara de personas que he conocido desde que era niño, que crecí mirando a Mr. and Mrs. Wolfberg y, ya saben, mis amigos de la infancia atrás. Es muy humilde y de hecho estoy agradecido de estar aquí. Así que ahora que hemos pasado por los placeres, vamos a la hazaña. Soy caminero, campeón, no puedo estar detrás del podium. Es muy difícil en la Parlamentaria para nosotros quedarnos en un lugar. Así que si me engañan, me encantaría, ya saben, poder interactuar. Pero voy a empezar diciendo que en Guyana estamos en una crisis. Quiero que cierras tus ojos conmigo por un momento y relates al oscuro que ves cuando cierras tus ojos. Porque eso es lo que experimentamos por al menos ocho horas al día ahora, en casa. Ya saben, estaba sentado y hablando con uno de mis colegas y estábamos hablando de la única constancia verdadera en la interacción y dije que me gustaría agregar a la GTL porque garantizamos que nos darán un blackout. Pero realmente, ya saben, es genial sobre la GTL, pero lo que no vemos es que la GTL realmente es el microcosmo para exactamente lo que está sucediendo en Guyana. Oscuro, descontrolamiento, incompetencia. Y justo como podemos decir que la GTL necesita nueva gestión, Guyana también necesita nueva gestión. Y así es por eso que estamos aquí, la diáspora, llamándote porque es importante que nos interesemos. Estamos literalmente en una crisis y hay mucho sucediendo al mismo tiempo. El año pasado fuimos la economía más creciente del mundo y viste toda la emblaguez y todas las revistas y todos los proyectos de farsa que se están lanzando. Y creo que este año estamos en la segunda creciente que ha sido tomada por Uruguay, creo que es. Al final de 2024, nuestro capital de GDP estará entre 24.000 y 25.000 dólares. Así que no tengas dudas, las cosas están sucediendo. La pregunta es, ¿por qué están sucediendo? Porque ciertamente no es para el hombre o mujer arduo y trabajador guyaneo. Y así tenemos una crisis. Tenemos una crisis de inseguridad alimentaria. El último estudio realizado por la FAO y la UNICEF, creo que es, mostró que el 58% de los guyanes son inseguros en la comida. ¿58%? ¿Qué significa eso? Significa que el 58% de los guyanes no tiene más de una comida nutritiva por día. Pero esos son solo los hechos. No es Amanda haciendo esto, estas son las estudios. Pero nuestro GDP está creciendo. Los guyanes están más hambrientos por comer. Algo está mal con eso. Algo está mal con eso. Y así estamos en una crisis. Estamos en una crisis porque nuestro sistema educativo está colapsando. No hay esfuerzo para mantener a nuestros maestros. Y quiero decir, para aquellos de nosotros que estuvimos educados en Guyana, ya saben, tenemos algunos de los mejores maestros que están coveted por todo el mundo, pero tenemos un gobierno que parece no pensar que deberían pagar nuestros maestros un salario de vida. Siento que la GTL es algo así. Así que estamos hablando del sistema educativo y del colapso virtual. Quiero decir, cualquiera que haya estado siguiendo las noticias en Guyana sabe que los maestros estaban en strike durante casi cinco semanas. Y pueden volver porque este gobierno no muestra ninguna voluntad para negociar colectivamente con nuestros maestros. Así que podrían tener un salario de vida. Sabemos que las enfermeras están huyendo en bajas. No porque quieran, sino porque es una cuestión de su supervivencia. Y así estamos en una crisis. Estamos en una crisis. Trabajo de infraestructura. Estamos gastando el 58% del último presupuesto en infraestructura solo. El 58% con una brecha de eficiencia del 41%. Así que cada dólar que gastamos en infraestructura, el 41 centavos se desperdicia. Y así son las realidades. Y así, ya saben, tenemos un head of state que parece contento de viajar por todo el mundo y recoger premios de, ya saben, desde varios continentes y cree que Guyana va a ser gobernada por videos virales y movimientos virales. No funciona así. Y así, estamos en una crisis. La violencia doméstica está en aumento. Los accidentes de carretera están en aumento. Vas a Guyana y los camiones de bigueta en la carretera. Una de las experiencias más aterradoras que vas a tener. Y así, como Paul dijo, estamos desidratados de todos lados. Y hablamos de estar desidratados de todos lados. Tenemos un líder occidental que acaba de pasar la ley diciendo que dos tercios de nuestro país ahora pertenece a ellos. Y así tenemos tránsito, tanto exterior como doméstico. Soy miembro de la Parlamentaria para el APNU, AFC, y pertenezco al partido más grande de la coalación. Y no es secreto porque no está abierto al público, pero hay problemas ahí también. Hay problemas ahí también. Y no soy uno, y siempre he sido muy rápido, que no discuto temas internos de los partidos. Pero hay temas allí en el público que tienen que ser abordados. El estado actual de las cosas es completamente inaceptable. Y no te preocupes por mí en eso. Totalmente inaceptable. Tenemos una nación que está en una crisis y nos detiene para unirnos. Miren, en comparación con lo que ustedes me habían dicho, crecí en el PNC. Ya saben, mis padres sirvieron, mis tantes, mis abuelos. Sirvieron en el PNC, así que crecí en un legado de servicio. Crecí en los pies de mujeres como Lynette y Celeste Dalton. Me enseñaron a comer con una espada y una cuchilla. Nos enseñaron que debías elocutar a tu hermana en algún lugar atrás y ella te diría que a los ocho y nueve fuimos las jóvenes que hicieron los objetos culturales. En la Comisión, cuando se celebró en Safaya. Recuerdo un año, creo que fue después de que el líder fundador había muerto y fue la primera Comisión para Desmond Hight. Y teníamos que ir a aprender un poema. Y teníamos que leer ese poema. Y uno de los versos de la Ora es: "Un hombre nacido para liderar no tiene opción, incluso si no tiene seguidores. Seguidores con un espíritu de amabilidad, sabiendo el valor de la ciudad silenciosa, sabiendo cuándo renunciar a la temporada y cuándo sobrepasar los cambios de dinero". Hay un poema escrito por Celeste Dalton en cuatro. La primera Comisión de la Ora, que después del paso del líder fundador, Burnham, a los siete, ocho, nueve, diez, teníamos que ser parte de lo que se llamaba Young Developers. No sé si alguien recuerda a los Young Developers. Teníamos que ir a la playa y cantar: "Somos Young Developers, orgullosos de estar involucrados. Somos el país, cooperativo en este país. Somos Young Developers, orgullosos de estar involucrados". Y así, crecí allí. Pero... También tengo que acomodarme, tenemos que cambiar. Tenemos que cambiar. Tenemos que convertirnos en el partido del futuro. La insensatez está haciendo lo mismo una y otra vez y esperando resultados diferentes. No estoy preparado para aceptarlo. No estoy preparado para escuchar que así siempre se ha hecho. Así que así es como tenemos que hacerlo. Tenemos que cambiar. Cualquier cosa que no puede cambiar morirá. Y Guyana depende de nosotros para ser los propabervios, los deliveradores de nuestro pueblo. Y así tenemos que unirnos. Y así esta unidad tiene que ser abordada. Y como líderes tenemos un deber de abordarlo, no después de una Comisión. Pero ahora, mientras somos líderes, no, tenemos que defendernos ahora. Porque hay gente que nos está mirando para confrontar un régimen que ha determinado que lo hará de alguna manera atraer a Guyanes o que decidirá quién obtiene el patrimonio de Guyanes. Así que tenemos que mantener los ojos en la bola. Ahora soy miembro elegido del ejecutivo central de mi partido y estoy preparado a decir públicamente que no podemos condone esta unidad, que esta unidad tiene que ser frenada. Pero surgió porque parecemos no ser capaces de aceptar y apreciar que todos tienen un rol a jugar. Cada miembro, como una mano, cada dedo tiene un rol a jugar. Y así, como una mano, como una mujer en el partido, no me siento por el ataque a una mujer de老乡. Y así denuncio los ataques a Miss Guyana. Tenemos que lograr esta cultura de atacar a las mujeres en nuestro partido. Cada una de ellas es importante. Para el PNC y Amnali es importante. Para el PNC de Volan y Lawrence es importante. Para el PNC de Carl Smith y Joseph es importante. Y todos tienen un rol importante a jugar. Y así es realmente triste. Pero creo que desde hoy veremos un retorno a nuestras respectivas esquinas y el predominio de buen sentido, porque tenemos una nación que depende de nosotros y cada uno de nosotros tiene un rol a jugar. Estoy enfermo y cansado de ver quién acaba de venir y quién va. El PNC no es algo que tomes vueltas. Es un partido que tiene que ser agilizado, que tiene que mostrar que es capaz de moverse y cambiar según los deseos de los tiempos. Así que... Tenemos que, borrow la palabra de mi querido amigo Roy Riggroo, y tenemos que entender que la Ora está escribiendo en nosotros porque estamos en una crisis. Así que... La buena parte de ello es que, y ya saben, me encanta referirte a la filosofía oriental. En japonés, el word crisis también equivale a oportunidad, ¿verdad? Y así estamos mirando y, sí, es malo, pero en esta aparente inesperación, ¿cuál es la oportunidad que nos ofrecen? A nivel nacional nos ofrecen la oportunidad de, por primera vez, asegurar que cada guyaneo, mujer o niño pueda vivir y disfrutar de una calidad de vida que, desde el punto de vista de la independencia, no hemos podido. Es una oportunidad para nosotros asegurar que estamos construyendo un país no basado en, francamente, la idea de un hombre de qué tipo de proyecto debería ser, sino un país que se desarrolla a seguir una estrategia económica sound. Eso es lo que tenemos la oportunidad de hacer. Tenemos la oportunidad de asegurar que los guyanes primero disfruten el patrimonio de Guyana y luego compartamos con nuestros vecinos y el resto del mundo a partir de nuestra overflow. Pero para hacer eso requiere un gobierno que esté comprometido. Y verdaderamente creo que nosotros en el PNC, nosotros en el APNU, porque quiero ser muy, muy claro que la política de la coalación es la política del futuro. Así que no haya duda sobre si estamos colaborando con quién va a regresar el AFC. Estamos juntos en la Asamblea Nacional ahora y estoy persuadida de que permaneceremos juntos porque es la política del futuro y no podemos diseñar y no podemos construir Guyana a menos que estemos guiados por un artículo 13 de nuestra Constitución que dice que la meta del sistema político es construir una democracia inclusiva. Y si queremos ver eso, entonces como partido tenemos que continuar comprometido con la inclusión. Rechazo estos ataques al PNC, que es de alguna manera un partido que es racista en su orientación. Y recordaré a Givens Givens BPP que continúa enviando a sus minions para estropear, ya saben, sellos de discar, que los dos primeros oficiales del PNC fueron Forbes Burnham y Latchman Zing. Les recordaré a los de Camerón, Saroop y a todos estos taluardes que son de orientación oriental y que sirven con fe. Me gustaría recordarles a Amnali que sin importar lo que ellos piensen ha servido y dado sangre, sudor, lágrimas en servicio al partido y tenemos que honrar eso. Pueden no estar de acuerdo con la visión de alguien, pero tienen que respetar su derecho a tener la visión. Because it is their view, it's not yours. You have to respect their right to have the view. And you have to respect their service. This culture of rejecting leaders that we feel, you know, are no longer, you know, in favor with us or serving us, we have to reject it. We have to honor those who have gone before us. We have to thank them for their sacrifices. And we have to pledge as the younger generation, as the next generation, that we will learn from their failures, we will honor their sacrifices and we will pick up and we will carry on and we will build a party that is stronger and better. Because as goes the PNC, goes Guyana. So with those welcoming words, I hope, I think we will now open the floor to questions and guided by Madame Moderator. I'll hand the mic back over to her as I am here and be happy to answer whatever questions you may have. Thank you so much.
You should be asking yourself, "Why is the chief running the president in the back there?" No, that's my first question. Anyway, at this point in time, we would like to collect information of persons who are here. So there's some information sheet passing around. Please feel free to put your contact information so we can follow up with you whenever we're having any related events. So thank you. I want to invite anyone if you have a question for Mrs. Seer. Please come up, come on this side. And we will have you ask your question. Please keep it brief. This is not an opportunity to confront anyone. Please make sure that your questions make sense. I hope you like to have a sensible answer. Okay, we will try to keep it all very respectful. So we have our question.
Thanks ever so much. Honorable answer, doors are ahead table. Thank you for taking the time to come and greet us and engage the diaspora once more as the Shadow Minister of the PNCI and part of the Coalition and Member of Parliament. It is admirable to see women in leadership because there is such an imbalance worldwide, as many of you would know. I am Belita Montecue. I am a first advocate and activist for women and youth. I am the Chair of the Women's Arm of the PNCI in the North America region. I am the CEO of United Critical Builders Mission, an NGO operational both in the US and Guyana. My questions. As the Shadow Minister, most times our ministers will come to the United States and official. And the diaspora has always felt that we have not gotten our full share regardless who sits in the seat. Doing business in Guyana is a challenge and will be a challenge for us for many reasons. Technological delay and all the other things. I would like to ask what you will do or what yourself and team have in mind for us moving forward? All of them sitting with engagements. Please permit me, Madame Moderator, to speak on behalf of the women I serve. Domestic violence in Guyana worldwide continue to be an alarming situation. In Guyana, as I've practiced since, it is unacceptable. Looking at some of the behaviors in Parliament and seeing a fellow parliamentarian on the opposite side of Ringo Pudeltu that may have been a good representation of himself is unacceptable. We've looked at the issue of the youngster, in fact, I was involved in that case. Now, our whole family cannot be located in the region because of that incident involving a member of the government. We are very concerned that the judicial system is not working for us. We are concerned, as a former cop, I see one of my former officers in the audience. Most of you would know him. I am concerned, we are concerned that the judicial system is not working for us. In the United States, we can have the court ensure that victims have a chance to represent themselves and in the absence of the victim, the court represents them. Can you, as a Member of Parliament, ensure that the same statement in Guyana includes them? And finally, Madame Moderator, some space is needed. Well, I'm sorry. Permit me to address the matters that are very serious and the women that I represent are not here, so I become their voices. I've heard of the issues and I understand the name of the distinguished woman, the woman who has served has been mentioned. Look, I'm a mother of only boys. And I always, as a feminist, I always have to create that balance when criticisms are made. And I believe as a woman and as a feminist and activist, if you control clothes as a woman, you must be willing to take it back from any gender. And so, while we respect the surface, let's not miss the point that if you pelt clothes, you must be able to receive. And that individual is no easy puncher. So, some of the responses, I think it's unfair to the incident. But thank you.
All right, I want to, we're going to start with the last point first. Because I happen to share a different view. I believe in all my heart about what, you know, what Martin Luther King said. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can. And I think it is important, particularly as women in politics, that we understand parameters and that we understand respect. It is paradoxical, it is contradictory for you to say if you want to give clothes, you got to take clothes and then speak about empowering women. I'll be very clear on that. There is political discourse and then there is disrespect. And it is particularly troubling because you are dealing with someone in your own party. And so you have no business insisting on standards from anybody else if you are not willing to have standards about the way you conduct your discourse. And that for me is a non-negotiable, particularly when it's in your own family. Like I said, for me, discipline is important. And it is important that as leaders, we model discipline. All right? Because it comes down to issues of moral authority. We're talking about dealings within a family. She's not a member of the PDP. She is a member of our family and must be treated as such. And when you hold important positions, you have to lead by example. So I want to be very clear on that. Because if I cannot protect a woman in an organization that I serve in from misogynistic attacks, I can't do anything for the women of Guyana. Charity begins at home. So let's talk about the issue of the diaspora. For a long time, we have had trouble engaging the diaspora for two, for one particular reason in fact. And it is that intangible thing called attitude. You know, very often we set up structures and systems and so on, but we don't, we don't understand the need to change those intangible things called culture. And, you know, the way people see and do things. And so I'll tell you what the problem has been with engaging the diaspora. You have people in Guyana who haven't left, who have stayed through it. Perhaps did not have or did not take the opportunity to migrate when it is presented to them. And so they're there. And then you have people who migrated, who came, advanced themselves, developed with the developing world and genuinely want to come back home and make a contribution. Guyana needs the contribution, so what is the problem? It is in the intangible of attitudes. Where if you talk to the average Guyanese, man, I tell you, "I've been in here, the struggle all the time, where you been?" Can we be honest? And then you have some people who, not with any malice, come back from the diaspora and know everything. I mean, let's have the hard conversations. "Oh, you people are so, this is not how it's done" and so, you know. I can understand that we are a young society, we just all the, of slavery and people telling us what to do and you come back and tell us what to do. "And I've been in here, the struggle all the time." And so you have two people with the best of intentions, but the intangible of attitude is preventing that symbiosis from happening. So what do we as leaders have a role to do? We have a role to help our people locally understand that these are our partners in the development of Guyana. And just like, you know, in the olden days in the Bible, the Lord would say, "You go and spy on the land, go and see what's going on there and come back and tell us." These are the people that are coming back to tell us that, hey, this is how we can develop this, this is how we can do that. I've been there, I've seen how that works and this is what we can do. And the diaspora understand that you're not coming to learn it over anybody, but that you're coming in as a part. And so all that is required is a simple attitude adjustment, that we as leaders have to champion. But some of us force the division because it keeps us in control. I for one am not afraid of an enlightened and a united people because it could only redound for the benefit of Guyana. So we got to adjust our attitudes on both sides if this thing is going to work. And then we've got to get them to the system of making it work. One of the things that I advocate for all the time is something called the skills map. I want to know where all the Guyanese are in the world and I want to know what it is that they do. So that if I need somebody from the EPA, I must know that there's a Vincent Adams out here to diaspora. If I need somebody that can talk about police reform and about advocating for victims, I need to know that there's a Bonita Montecue here that does what she does and can come back home and impart that knowledge. So we got to stop this a lot of talk, there's too much talk, it's time now for action. And so organizations, just like the one that Bonita leads, for example, could lead the way in doing that and beginning to understand where we are in the world. You know that there are more Guyanese living outside of Guyana than in Guyana. With some remarkable skills, look, I met Violet Titten the other day, an amazing lady with a PhD in, guess what, energy economics. Why isn't she at home serving? She's not there because another certain man named Barack Jacky that believes that he alone got the brains to run a whole island industry. Exxon has 400 people appointed to the Guyana desk, but he, Bobby, and somebody else, because they got this thing on lock. The point is that we have the skills. So we have, the starting point is mapping the skills. The starting point is ensure that if we're going to retain consultants, and I'll tell you why this is important. Because for too long, we have spent money on initiatives that are not culturally responsive. You cannot bring people into our country who don't understand the culture. Because very often, they shape culturally unresponsive programs and interventions. And so if you have a Guyanese born in Charleston, in our vice town, in the quarantine, that has come over here and that has excelled and is at the top of the game there, your priority has to be to win that person back to Guyana because God knows, for the first time, we got him a pay that properly. Right? So those are the two immediate steps that I would take on this issue of domestic violence. It is a burning concern. I don't know if you saw on social media, there was a very disturbing video circulated and I won't go into details about it. But suffice it to say that it's troubling and it's concerning. And I know that the government, in the person of the Minister for Social Protection has indicated that they will be revising and revamping the domestic violence law. We are not in government, but one of the things that we will insist upon is that it goes to a special select committee. And in that committee, Bonita, people like yourself and your organizations will be able to make proposals to make the law better. And so that is what we can commit to. And I'd be happy for us to liaise and have people like yourself function as subject matter experts for our team that will huddle to review it so that we get the best. The beautiful thing about us in Guyana is that where we are, other people have gone before. So we don't need to learn the lessons the hard way. We can actually look, we can learn, we could adapt. And I think those were the three issues that you asked that we addressed and so I hope that I did that justice. Thank you.
Give it a shark. You're standard for men.
Always has more time for the women.
Thanks for having me here. My name is Maxwell Lawson and I was thinking about my qualification, the only one I found my birth certificate. She said, "I'm a Guyanese." That's your qualification. That's why, just one, there's a citizenship question, two parts of it. It seems we all agree that change must come to Guyana as it was happening next election cycle. So the two-part question. I wanted to share a stat with the European Rights Commission that there are 40,000 Venezuelans in Guyana. And I think she said 80% are Guyanese parents. I don't know how that will be identified. But it has so many of the people for the next election cycle. Because when somebody is of Guyanese parentage, you can get... When someone is of Guyanese parentage, that means they are a kid. It automatically becomes Guyanese and they have the right to vote and everything else. to vote and everything else. And someone, another part of it said that it's much more than 40,000, maybe 60,000. So I dread to think what would happen, uh, in terms of registration for voting. And that makes, that means biometrics, if you really process people and you say they're genuinely Guyanese, biometrics and paladis doesn't really matter. You're every year. So I, I would want to know that what, uh, system or what are the thoughts around dealing with that crisis that I see, uh, PVP's planning, give, share a challenge with you. They are planning to do a counter take, not just paladis, but making illegal people legal. Plus, our laws in terms of citizenship need to be, uh, revamped. Because we don't, people like me, after five years or seven years, you forgive citizenship with all the rights of privilege. In the Bahamas, before you get citizenship, you gotta get 15 years as a permanent resident or not be 10 years before you even apply to vote. You get the rights even to buy land and all that. Why are we five and seven years? The second part of the citizenship question is, is Florence Singh, but she is the commissioner for the elections. Is she the chairperson? Is she on contract and when will that happen? Is Florence Singh on contract and when will that happen? Are we going in this election with her as the chairperson? If you can throw some light at that, I appreciate it. I'm not a hard to kill it like you, but you're a bit of shit pressure, so let's hear from you.
Well, thank you for that. I am certainly, I'm certainly going to try. And you know, this question really does bring to the fore something that I have been, been laboring for the last two or three years. And it started when the government, and very mind me of a government that sits in power by one seat majority. So they in no way, shape or form, um, have a commanding or overwhelming mandate in the context of, of, of a mandate that the government can receive, right? So what they started out this process with was they amended the Registration of Births and Dads Act that dealt with, particularly that aspect that dealt with late registration of a citizen. Now in other countries, for example in Calcom, if as an adult you find yourself without a birth certificate, there are a number of steps and processes that you have to go through to establish that you are entitled to a birth certificate. So for example, things like an affidavit from the primary school you went to, from members of the community, your clinic card, records if you had any, and a number of requirements you had to, um, satisfy. What the government did was that they did away with all of that. And said that an affidavit from a justice of the peace or a tushaw in the case of an indigenous community could execute an affidavit and say, yes, you were born here, you grew up here. And with that, you could go to the GRO and become a citizen. So we flagged that on the floor of the National Assembly, but they, they passed it anyway. Um, with their one-seat majority. Then next we saw the amendment of the Representation of the People Act to achieve some particular aims. Fast forward to 2024, where are we? You have a nation of about 28 million people on our Western flank. Because the government has not made any attempt to check migration into Guyana, what you have now, by our count, is in excess of 16,000 Venezuelan nationals. 20% of those are documented. Now the government has to decide on a story, eh? Because when this thing first started, they said in the National Assembly that these were warrows. The indigenous tribe of people that moved back and forth over the border. And then suddenly it stopped being warrows and then Jackdaw got up and said, you know, those people are Guyanese returning home. You remember on the farms burnout, when people were this and that, they left and so they're coming back home. So we said to them, look, give us the information. Because we are talking about this issue, they are accusing us of being xenophobic. Because of course, as far as they're concerned, you must not say anything, they must do what they like. And believe that they can brand you whatever they like and that will shut you up. But I think we've been very clear that we're not gonna be shut up about the matter because what this is in effect doing is taking the political direction, the future of our country out of the hands of Guyanese. And that is problematic. That is compounded by the lack of an immigration policy. Now you all live in the US, you have things about a clear path to citizenship, etc. We don't have that in there. It's who you know, the GRO. That is your clear path. And it's, it's funny, but it has implications. And I am particularly concerned about Venezuelan migrants because, you know, I read and I got some sense. And I know that there is a danger of something called a soft invasion happening. And you know, the trouble that I'm having with here, Fanny, is that he's traversing the world over. Yapping and, and talking and, and not understanding that at home you need to put systems in place. Because I'll tell you, we are relying, as we rightfully show, on the support of the international community, um, in the case of, of Venezuela. Because of course, we have a military of about 3,000 and so on, compared to Venezuela with an army of a few hundred thousand and fancy jets and so forth. We don't have that, so we have to rely on the international community. But let's be clear, that only comes into play when there is the question of the use of force. In the deliberate injection of population into another nation, there's not a question of the use of force. So what role will the international community play then? In protecting us? They can't. And so it is up to us to craft systems to make sure that we are protected from this. Because in international law, there is a thing called self-determination. It is an actual concept that people in a locality can determine where and who they want to go for them. We saw it happen with crime in Russia. So there's not, there's not a lack of precedent. And this is not me being alarmist, this is me saying to us that there's a clear and present danger here, it has to be addressed. In Region 1 already, Guyanese are outnumbered 3 to 1. In Region 1, imagine that spreading throughout the SE Quavo. What the consequences will be. And I am not ascribing malice to the Venezuelans, but understand that these people honestly, the leader of the SE Quavo belongs to them. Because this is what they were taught from nursery school, right? So they're coming here with the lead that they've been in SE Quavo in your country. Do you understand, Madam? Do you see the dilemma that we are in? So this government has to be serious about addressing this issue. There is urgency for an immigration policy. We've been saying it for the last three years. We have to get to a point where there is a clear path to citizenship. Now they are reporting Bangladeshis and I want you to understand the implications of this because a seat in parliament is between 5,000 to 7,000 votes. So it has implications. So we will continue to call for, um, the reforms in that regard. And we will also continue to call for the government to be a little more serious in addressing this issue. The last point that I wanna make in this regard is that based on their own numbers and research, the Venezuelan males are coming for the fastest growing prison population in Guyana. So we have a crime and security issue on our hands. Not to mention a beleaguered healthcare system because you already don't have nurses. And when you dump 60,000 people on an already beleaguered health and education system, we are, we are setting ourselves up for disaster. And just like the GPL, the government has demonstrated that it doesn't have a clue, they don't have a clue on how to deal with this. One of the things that the APNHC did was to establish this operation called Operation Armadillo. And what that did was that it had military presence in all of the frontier villages. We don't have that anymore. They, they have the people, they put these soldiers and the officers cleaning drains in Georgetown as a part of the cleanup campaign. And that, that to me is so disrespectful. I, I am the child of an army officer and I have a problem with that. So on this issue of Florence Singh, I don't know if the lady is on a contract or not. But the nature of contracts is that they can change, they can be renegotiated, they can be terminated for cause. It is a question of what we are willing to agitate for as a people. We saw what public pressure did that caused Nigel Darrell to resign. And we have to be willing to bring that type of pressure to any situation that we want to see change. Our party sees nothing without a demand being placed on it. It never has and it never will. So I will stop there to make room for more, um, questions if you may have.
Thank you. One, one second. Thank you. We have a few questions coming in online. I wanna pose a question to Mr. Zier. They are asking if you have any intent to run for leadership of the party. And secondly, they also wanna know in light of the treatment of young people, what is the plan of the opposition party to include young people in the progress and of the election?
Somebody clearly said that. But we're gonna, we're gonna answer these questions. Look, as it relates to the leadership of the, of the PNC, I wanna say this very, very clearly. And I hope that you hear my heart in all of this. I could easily stand here and say yes and take the pressure off of me. But that is not where my heart really is because I will tell you that my concern is that in doing that, I am perpetuating frankly dysfunction. When is Congress? Yeah, but August is not a date. Right? And so understand that whilst I could very easily do it all of this, my deeper concern is that we do not feed in. I am not willing to feed in to dysfunction. The PNC has a constitution. It is the supreme document that guides our party. And Congress happens within a framework. And so you know, whilst others reserve the right to declare and declare, how do you declare for a Congress that hasn't been announced? And so I am not willing to feed into the dysfunction. When a date is announced and we know the 5th, the 6th, the 7th of August, a process will be kick-started. And it is within that process that decisions are going to be made. Because let me be clear about something, you know, people talk about leadership like of the PNCs if it's just something you run up for. No, it has implications. Let's talk. It has implications. You are going to lead a major party. It has to take the fight to a government. That's something you arrive unlikely. You've gotta consult with your family because whether you like it or not, you need their support on the journey. Do you understand what I'm saying? And so, you know, the dysfunction that we're seeing, I am not willing to, to feed into it. Let's do this thing properly. Announce when Congress will be. What are you running for and declaring that you're gonna win a Congress that hasn't been announced? No, no, let's talk about this. If we don't be talking about discipline, let's be disciplined. We can't talk about discipline only when it means controlling people and situations. Discipline gotta begin in the PNC and it's going to begin with me. So I'm not going to feed into that because we have to focus on holding this government accountable. Look, two people have stated their intentions and a whole sight show has begun. You understand? Name card in a Google. We gotta keep our eyes on the ball. And that is holding this government's feet to the fire. So I assure you, once we begin to kick-start a process, due consideration will be paid. Very clear decisions will be communicated within a particular framework. And that is my position on that. Alright? So let's focus on holding this PVBC government feet, um, to the fire. They are messing our country up. We got people living in black hole. We don't have water. You can't walk the roads in, in, in peace before a sand truck almost, you know, takes you out. We have real pressing issues. We gotta reform our healthcare, we gotta reform our education sector. We will focus on that. And when a date is announced and the processes are kick-started, information will be forthcoming. What was the other thing planned of the opposition for young people? Look. You know, one of the things that I'm moving for is speaking by night in there, but it's getting into trouble sometimes. So I pause because I'm trying to to, no, not to hold back, but to find a way and hope to say it. That's the truth, just that you're free. So it's a truth. We have to decide, oh, we're gonna treat with young people. That's the first thing. Right? Because for somebody like me, you know, oh, she's young. She just come. And so on and so forth. And this disposition that we have to young people we gather, fix it. Because the point of fact, I'm older than the sitting president and I'm a mother of two young adults, I understand the confusion because I don't look it. But but the point is, we have to adjust our attitude to our young people. And it's particularly important for Guyana. We have the largest population of young people in Calcom. It therefore means that the interventions that we have have to be crafted by young people for young people. I have a 20-year-old in medical school, right? And I'll tell you, they are far more advanced than I ever was at their age. And so we have got to hear more from them about how they see their future in Guyana. And I'm sorry, but to do that, they relate better to younger people. And so we can't have it in cake and make. We can't say that we have to attract young people, but we don't want to trust young people with leadership. Can't have it both ways. So we gotta begin first to understand that we have to trust that our young people are capable and that their hands are outstretched and that they're waiting for us to place the opportunity in their hands to show us what they can do. And that's the beginning of the conversation right there. And from that And from that earnest engagement, that honest engagement, they're like, you're young, you just come, you know what you're talking about. So let me hear from you. Where is it that you see yourself? In the case of our party, where is it that you see your party doing? If we could come to it with an open mind, then is when we can begin to craft programs. So for me, I'm not even gonna try to tell you what we're gonna do for them. Because I'm not even sure what we want to do for them is what they want or need for that matter. So the first order of business has to be to open the door for them, to have them understand that they have an equal and valued place at the table and show them the respect that they deserve as young people. So I hope that you are online and you would have answered that question.
Thank you. There we have it. A lot of wisdom, a lot of knowledge. Let's have the next question, please.
Alright, good afternoon. Amanzo, I just wanted to follow up on the question from the individual who asked about Venezuelan citizenship and registration. Your response, you stated that the government passed an act of parliament to change the way, wanting the mechanism to be getting work certificates, et cetera. As a parliamentarian and as a party, can you not test that in the courts? Citizenship is a fundamental right. And the act of changing and altering how one becomes a citizen or establishes a citizenship is not something that the mayor passes over that is issued. So can you explain to me, number one, is that the process in the parliament? And why is the opposition and others not taking that to the court in order to challenge the constitution now and take it back to the village?
That is an absolutely brilliant question. And this is why. Let me be blunt, this is why it's important that we understand that we each have a role to play in this struggle. Alright, because he is correct. Citizenship is not a privilege that is just handed willy-nilly. It is something that has to be guided by a process. And I for one believe that we must as far as possible test all of these things in a court of law. And this is why, you know, it comes back to what I've been saying before, understanding our roles and our strengths. I've been practicing law for twenty-one years now, but I'm not a litigator. There are people in our party with those strengths. And that is why we gotta stop all of these sideshows and get together around the table. Yeah, you can feel free to clap. No, this is why we have to stop the sideshows, get together with the people who are versed and understand and are good at litigation and keep the government up the court steps. But when we engage in sideshows, it takes our energy away from what we have to do. So I agree with you, man. I completely agree with you and in fact, it's something that I will take up with my friend, Senior Counselor Ford, when he get back, when I, when I, when I get back home. Because I agree that we have to test these things in a court of law. Now, mind you, they, they, they will have amended a particular segment of the law as it relates to late registration. And so, but absolutely, that is why the courts are there, to prevent the abuse of power by an executive and to, to interpret the laws passed by the legislature. So it is, it is a sound recommendation and I intend to certainly take it up at the level of the central executive when I return home.
Right there, man, up to me here. So, good evening, Mr. Amanzo. I say welcome to you, welcome to the US. I have two questions here for a while, but before the question, I want to encourage you to continue on the Venezuelan issue. I as a former military member of the Guyanese Force, we know the dangers of a soft invasion. People, for those of us who don't understand a soft invasion, it's Venezuelan, they don't have to live in a, they don't have to fly a aircraft or anything. They'll invade us from within. And that is the citizens that they're sending into our country. Like Mr. Amanzo said, there are towns, there are parts of our region where they're treating Venezuelan, every Guyanese, that's a soft invasion right there. Before you know it, they have kids here and before you know it, they're reparated. That's, that's what's hard to deal with. So we need to be aware of these activities of the approach Venezuelan or in our country. Alright, you know, PPP is claiming the area with us. Every time Amanzo speak, they, they, they test to say, oh, she's a Nigerian, let's give her. Alright, we know it's, it's an action-oriented machine that we're, that they're putting in place. Because if our government, you know, care so much about the people of the world, why did they lack of our Asian brothers and sisters? From African members, why didn't have Asian sister? So I encourage you to continue pushing out of it. People may not see now, but they'll see later on if we will be able to, you know, play, learn a blind guy to what is the Venezuelan idea. Online question from Mr. Toy Kambal. She's asking if you're doing other cities, if people be having to maintain in other states, cities? And secondly, the other question was, if citizens, if they're, if they're Guyanese living in the diaspora are allowed to register to vote in Guyana?
So we'll take the last first because I do have a comment on the Venezuelan issue. Look, if you are a Guyanese, you are born Guyanese and you now live in the diaspora, of course, you are entitled to be entered onto the list, the NRR, the National Register of Registrants, and to be extracted onto voters list. Once you're over the age of eighteen, you register from the age of fourteen. If you are the descendant of a Guyanese bear and then the law does provide for citizenship by virtue of descent. And so you go home with your parents, birth certificates, your birth certificate. You go up to the GRO and you, you, you get yourself your certificate. You don't have to have an affidavit, I don't think.
We don't align here.
And frankly, I know that they have put it online and there are people who have applied online and they have received their, their documents within a reasonable time. So absolutely, the question of cities, if you invite me, I will come. And then the issue of Venezuela, look, you know, I'll tell you what bothers me even more about the Venezuela issue. In addition to the attitude of this government, it is their shortsightedness. Now, we have passed a 1.4 trillion dollar budget, hereabouts. Check to see the percentage of that that is dedicated to the development of SECO. It is embarrassingly low, it is embarrassingly small. You're talking about a region that spans five of our administrative regions and that accounts for over seventy-five percent of our GDP. There's a reason why Maduro is interested in our land because as goes the land, goes the sea. And so your maritime boundaries are determined by your land boundaries. So Claire in SECO puts Exxon and all of their operations smack dab in the middle of what will be his EEZ. So understand, this is not just something where they wake up and do, these people play the long game. And unfortunately, we in Guyana play in five-year cycles and we have to stop it. No one would expect that this government understanding this spread of Venezuela pauses, that they would focus on the development of SECO, that you would see significant investment in infrastructure to incentivize and catalyze the movement of Guyanese into the area, but you don't see that. What you see, a massive infrastructure project, where? Along the coast. Of course, that based on the predictions that it might be underwater by 2030, make it make sense. It doesn't make sense. And so we have to champion the solutions for the populating of the SECO with Guyanese, for investing in infrastructure. And one of the plans that we had in government, that past President Granger made very, very clear, that we were setting up towns in all of these regions. We didn't just declare township in Mania for the fun of it. It was intended to allow an administrative hub to be set up in every region and so to grow out and build out infrastructure from within the regions. This is why we placed a heavy emphasis on air transport. Whilst at the Civil Aviation Authority, I was the project manager for a twenty-five-year civil aviation master plan. And what we planned out was an airport, a regional airport in every region. Because of course it would take time to build a load infrastructure, but you could build an air transport infrastructure in a faster time. So there was careful planning. But we know the PPP has a problem with plans and impact assessments and so on. So going forward, we are committing to heavier investment in SECO in terms of infrastructure and in terms of catalyzing the population, incentivizing Guyanese to begin strategically retreating from a coastline that we may very well lose and to begin to populate the SECO because we understand the importance of population to our territorial integrity, right? So, thank you for those questions.
Hello. Thank you so much for sponsoring Zeru for meeting with us here in the diaspora and providing such incredible information. My question is, my name is David Gray and my question is, what preparations is your party making to contest the elections in 2025? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. It's a very, very important question and I know it is a question that is on the minds of every party member and of every supporter of the PNC because we are, for all intents and purposes, the largest party in the Colation and the largest party within the APNU. We have to get ourselves together very quickly. We have to. And I'm not prepared to sit here and to, oh, yes, and they give you fluff and they don't. We have to get it together and quickly. We have a window of opportunity here to unite our party, to come up with the best possible formulation that will see us getting back into government. Which is why I keep saying that party unity cannot be a question for after Congress. It has to be a question for now, has to be a question for now. And so I am personally confident that once we seize this window of opportunity and do the right things, reconfigure if we need to in terms of, 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 of leadership and we seize the moment, then we have a, we have a path to victory. But the question is, are we, you know, they got, they got a saying, um, not a saying, but by the first judgment was begin and you gotta begin in your own house first. We gotta begin getting our own house in order before we can truly and effectively put the nation in order. And so for me, step one is party unity. Because I'm telling you, man, I know my brothers and sisters in the PNC. I know their strengths, I know their abilities. And I'm telling you that we are head and shoulders above what we have now for a government. But we have to have leadership that will unify us and that can understand that we each have to function where we function best. So that's the first step of preparation. And then once we do that, it's a question of launching a campaign, which frankly should have been done months ago because you're always, and you have to as a party, always be in campaign mode. I don't subscribe to this thing that you gotta pause and then go back. You always have to be at it. We have to get out of the reactive mode, we have to be proactive. And so I'm saying to you in all honesty, we gotta fix some things so that we are emerging stronger, we're emerging better and we can take on the PPP. And I frankly, I'm not concerned or worried about our capability and our capacity. We stand head and shoulders above them in terms of governance. For the, for the, for the five years the Colation was in government, we saw tangible improvement and development in every sphere of Guyanese livelihood and living. Everything was not done perfectly. And so that's, I think, we give into the human tendency to focus on what we did not correctly and lose focus on the things that we did. We did good things and we did more good than we did wrong or we did more right things than we made mistakes. And so for me, it is a question of how do we build on that? We have the vision for a people-centered approach. We have the vision for delivering a good quality of life for Guyanese. We've started on the road and in three effective years, Guyanese saw tremendous change. So I have no doubt about our capacity, but we have to get ourselves in a state of readiness and we owe the people of Guyana that. This is why I'm big on party unity. This is why I'm big on us honoring each other in our party. And this is why I'm big on saying that we cannot take our eyes off of the ball.
Ah, there you have it, some motivation. Does anyone else have any questions? We invite you to educate. Okay, we'll come to you and, okay, we'll come to you. Mr. Berg?
Good afternoon. My name is Mr. Berg. I want to follow, I have two questions. I want to follow a pre-provision of elections. Do you envisage the PNC going to elections or the coalition? Because here is any indication that it is. So that's my first question. And there's no, that's not why there's a coalition. The coalition is the parliament, but politically, as a political party, there's a coalition because the KFC left the coalition. So that's the basis of my question. I know that the coalition exists based on a previous arrangement in the last elections in parliament, but the, the KFC has left the coalition. And so my question is, is the party? And so my question is, is the party currently engaged in coalition talks so that when the elections are called, there is a coalition? Because I don't think the PNC is a bit of an action alone. And in context of that, I heard people saying Congress will be held, PNC Congress will be held at Congress. And it doesn't seem practical that if you prepare for the election, the Congress will be held at Congress because PPP Congress is next month. And to me, if PPP Congress is next month, they're going to call the elections this year. So that's my first question and comment. Secondly, Venezuela. Somehow I don't think that, I've been speaking to the DASFOR, know what the PNC's policy is on Venezuela and on the Venezuela might be. I mean, we hear the speeches, the talk, press conferences and so on. But I think if we were to do across the country and ask, "What's the PNC's policy" that would be different from the PPP in terms of Venezuela? I'm not sure anybody would give us a cool, even answer. And so, for instance, this Venezuela, Guyana issue can blow up into real global catastrophe. We have Venezuela allowing Iran to build parts of drones in Venezuela. We have Russia backing that. So you have Venezuela, Iran and Russia playing, and China, I mean, if we see Venezuela with regard to their claim on Guyana, and then you have the United States, Canada and the rest of the world supposedly backing us because of the Exxon investment. But I don't think Guyanese can understand the geopolitical importance of what is happening because the government does the same. And we haven't heard the party in parliament or other part articulate a different approach to the Venezuelan issue than the government. We understand that, yes, we have to show national unity, but I think the government is really investing hard. And I think if the party wants to distinguish itself from that confusion, where the government is somehow pleasing the Venezuelan because they want to come together, their votes, and they're confusing people. So I wonder if there's a separate policy on Venezuela that the party has. And the other thing is with regard to this registration, and you have already mentioned, recommended that this amendment to the laws be challenged. Generally speaking, we know the party talks about policy issues at press conferences, but I'm not sure how many people listen to those press conferences. And then the media, 90% of the media supports government. So I'm wondering if there's a a different mechanism coming up to elections that the party would employ to let people know what their policies are. We get a lot of complaints, "Governor, this, and that," but I'm not sure we know what the PNC's plan is and their policies are. So that's my question.
Thank you. Being comfortable with Rick for Berg, thank you for being here with us. You know, we get another cost for Rick for back in Guyana. But we want to be clear that we ain't giving him up. Right? You know, if you must put distance between yourself and Berg, I'll wash. If PPP didn't put distance between themselves and Jaguar, I'd have to sue it. So we ain't giving up, brother. First time we've been here. And they're broke out there. So thank you for being here and always thank you for your insightful and incisive questions. I'll start from the last one first. Absolutely, there has to be a different strategy. And I believe that the strategy lies in grassroots, in getting down there and talking with the people. There's no substitute for that. Anybody that knows me knows that I'm a champion of social media because I understand the utility of social media. But we have to declare that there's no substitute for going into your communities and talking with your people, having them touch and feel you and to hear your heart on matters. And so look, for the last, from the beginning of the year, as much as, as a member of parliament, myself and colleagues can, we have gone to the communities and we're talking with people. What I desire is a far more coordinated approach to the outreach. I would like to see where the leader of the opposition goes into a community and he's there with 10 of his MPs and we're fanning out and so on. That is what I would like to see. Because engagement on the ground is important. But let's not make any mistake, we live in a globalized world now. And so the engagement of the international community is increasingly assuming importance. If it's anything that we would have learned from our 2020 elections that we cannot neglect, our interactions with the international community. So we have to do both. We've got to walk and chew gum at the same time. So community engagement, every village, every township, every community, we have to be there communicating our message to the people. With the advent of social media, we can reach 20,000 people in one hour. Rick for Berg or Meli Belkling of Alive, 20K viewing. So we have to make use of that mechanism as well. But the mechanism is one thing, the messaging is another thing altogether. And I think that is the point that you are getting at. There is no doubt that geopolitically, there's a lot happening in Guyana. We're the location of a confluence of a number of factors geopolitically. You've got BRICS, you have the US scandal, you have Caricom and all of China, which is a part of BRICS. All of those interests are literally playing out before our very eyes within Guyana. And so we have to have a strategy and we have to have a plan that allows us to pursue our national interest above anybody else's agenda. The beautiful thing about the party to which I belong is that we have produced giants as it relates to international relations and foreign policy and diplomacy. So I know that we have the skills within to be able to craft the strategy and some key components of that strategy has to be, have to be, one, the protection of our territorial integrity and our sovereignty. That has to be the first thing. In this regard, what we have proposed is first and foremost, a border commission. A border commission comprised of a cross-section of Guyanese intellects, organizations, whose task would be to craft strategies and interventions to ensure that our borders are secure. We have also proposed a foreign policy council which will bring the best and brightest minds in foreign policy, in international relations, in one place, in academia, the minds from academia, from civil society, in one place to craft foreign policy that will put Guyana's national interest first. Because what we are seeing is increasingly a transactional approach to our foreign policy. And when you engage in transactionalism to the degree that we are doing, you're setting yourself up for your sovereignty to be undermined. And that is dangerous. So at the policy level, and we all understand that policy guides everything else, we have proposed those two interventions. We recommend the monthly meeting of the Sectoral Committee on Foreign Relations. I have to be the deputy chair of that committee in parliament. And our last meeting was in November. But Maduro just passed a law annexing Tuta Lary and thought, "Can't call a meeting yet." I have written countless times and quarreled in public countless times. And so now the energy has to be focused on removing them and putting in place a government that can handle this business. So those are just two of the solutions that we propose. The other thing that we have to have, and I've referenced it here before, is a SONG migration policy. In the 2015 to 2020 iteration of the APNU AFC government, we commenced to work with the IOM on developing the migration profile. Because you see, the dilemma is this, we need people. For the scale of development that we have to do, we have to have people. But in the absence of SONG policy, we don't know who we need and how much quantities we need them in and where we need them. So these are the solutions that we have been proposing. So we're not devoid or bereft of solutions. As it relates to the Venezuela, we've been very, very clear. Any citizen who finds themselves in Guyana is entitled to the protection of their human rights and dignity. It is our obligation. And whilst we are not party to any UN convention, refugee and all of that, we have an obligation as a member state of the UN system to accord the full protection of the law. Of course, with the exceptions, because again, break the law, etc. You break the law, you're subject to the law as any other person would be. And so we are committed to that. But our emphasis will be on strengthening the military presence in our frontier communities. Operation Armadillo saw results. It saw a reduction in the harassment of our magnus from the syndicato. And so we have to do that along with incentivizing Guyanese presence in Essequivo. So I've spoken of at least six solutions that we've proffered to this situation. You have a stiff-necked government however, and they will not implement it simply because it comes from us. So they have to go, we have to vote them out so that the people who know how to do this can have the opportunity to do it for the benefit of the people of Guyana. Coalition politics was your last point. I started off by saying coalition politics is the politics of the future. And let me tell you, and this is a man's view. I have no doubt that we will be returning as a coalition. I work every day with the likes of Sherrod Duncan, with the likes of Kathy Hughes, with the likes of Cameron Tramputan, every day. And we function in parliament. And anybody who does not see the importance of coalition is frankly myopic. Because it is the politics of the future of Guyana. So, yes, the agreement that saw the APNU AFC coming into being has expired. And I believe that the expiration of that was not handled correctly. Again, messaging is important because as far as I understand it, the agreement came to an end and the AFC said, "Look, we will continue to work together in parliament. We are the parliamentary opposition. But as a party that is separate and distinct from the APNU, from the PNC, we will use this opportunity to regroup, to strengthen our party so that we are able to come back to the coalition with more." And that was the messaging that ought to be put out there. In the absence of that, it has led to all kinds of wild speculation. But for me, if I pick up the phone and call Cameron Tramputan, he will answer. If I pick up the phone and say, "Sherrod, we need to go here today." He's like, "Girl, what time?" And we are on it. Juretta Finance. Juretta, girl, was it balancing the natural resource fund? That is collaboration. That is cooperation. And I'm saying that it exists. And so we have to dispel these notions that there is some kind of act criminaly, etc., as far as I am concerned. And I can speak in the context of my relationship with our Colation brothers and sisters. That does not exist. And so I'm optimistic. I am optimistic barring some insurmountable hurdle, which I can't imagine, you know, what that will be, that we'll be returning as a coalition, we're better together, we're stronger together.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have a question. Now we have a airline, my name is Pauline Adams. We have a airline, United Airlines. It's flying from Houston, Texas to Guyana, four times booking. I'm glad I reached it because you've aviation. Who are the Guyanese that look like us flying on a airline to Guyana? And Guyana government is that, that can reverse Exxon because that's going to come on Exxon budget. And we are paying. Why that airline couldn't fly from Guyana to Kennedy to Texas, from Texas to Kennedy to Guyana? And we could have made this come for something. I listened to you at the budget presentation and you said before six months, you're going to come back to the natural resources fund for a subvention? They're coming, are their ears here? Because of these reasons, they didn't see. Now they said they can't go for the teachers. If you're going to go for a line that doesn't make a job, none of us travel with it. Anybody knows anybody that traveled from Texas to Guyana? Can you please explain this? Martin, can you please explain that for me? For us. Thank you.
I'm in Colin and I'm going to try. I'm certainly going to try, look. So, of course, the development of air routes and of airlines are a number of result of, it is as a result of a number of factors, including airlift, right? Capacity and the market for movement. And so we have a near service agreement with the United States that allows that to happen and allows US carriers to come in and to fly between various points. It is a function of the market. So the government has to create the enabling environment however for the growth and the development of the air transport sector. So I don't think it is a bad thing that we have increased capacity into the country. Because when you talk about the ease of doing business, you look at Trinidad and there are far more airlines flying into Trinidad than there are flying into Guyana. We need the capacity if we're going to be serious about being competitive in business. So I have no issue with airlines flying in. As somebody that needs to move around, I need to know that I got capacity to move me from A to B. So I have no difficulty with that. I hear your concern about the fact that Exxon is going to recover its costs. I hear that concern. And again, it goes back to this policy of this government. Let's be clear, this is provided for in the in the in the contract, right? So it's a question of contractual obligations. But guess what? As a government, we have the duty to ensure that we are able to properly audit the costs that are being submitted to us pursuant to these arrangements. Which is why, for the life of me, I cannot understand how a government that is serious about maximizing returns from the hydrocarbon sector would not engage auditors that have experience in auditing these types of expenditure. I mean, no disrespect to the people I got now, but I mean, a tax auditor can't do that. And so as a solution, we have to have accounting and auditing firms with the requisite experience, contracted to work on our behalf. Listen, we have to dispel this notion that we could show up with our two long hands and make mans and talk about, you know, renegotiations and all kinds of things. It does not work that way. You have to have expertise at your disposal. And we do not have expertise. Barjan New is an expert in failed projects. So he and Bobby Gosai and whoever the two auditors are, the people saying you can't see the meter, cannot be what Guyana has at its disposal to deal with this industry. We have to get investment firms, there are very good ones here in the US, that will talk to us and guide us about how we maximize. We have to have qualified auditors. There's KPMG, there's Price Waterhouse Coopers. There's so many firms that have done this for other countries that have gone this way before. But Barjan New expects us to believe that he can advertise and attract these people. And we have to reject that. Our government will see the institutional strengthening and capacity building of Guyana to deal with the sector. We started it with establishing a department of energy. They disbanded it. We will reinstitute those those departments and institutions and ensure that when we show up to a deal, we show up with the best and brightest that our oil money could afford so that we get the best for Guyanese out of all of these deals. So Colin, I hope that that helps to assuage to whatever degree it could your your anxiety, which which I completely understand. But we'll talk after. But I know a lot of people and I think we're going to wrap up soon.
Good evening, Honorable MP. My name is Indem Drakes. Now, I think the PNC party needs to go backwards before they go forward. Now, I was chairman for the Queensland DNC group. And I was the vice chairman for the Aloton, Queensland North and South Government's Work Group in the eighties and nineties. Now, sometimes you will get a message, mobilize the members because they're frank and they're sort of the group. That is where we need to go back. Now, we have social media. When you go out and do those things, let people know that you are known in the community doing these things. The other thing I want to speak about is Guyana has already been invaded by Venezuela. I was in Guyana in November, traveling the bus up East Coast, and there were some Venezuelans. A Guyanese guy came into the bus. Now, people with military training like me will know what I'm speaking about. He came in the bus, he saw one of the Venezuelans, he recognized him, and they started speaking in Spanish. Because this Guyanese guy used to live in Venezuela. Now, when they got out and busted, the driver asked the guy where you knew him from. He said, that guy was a coroner in the Venezuelan army. I say no more.
And and starting on the last point of debate first, that is the gravity of what we are facing. That is the gravity of what we are facing. And so in addition to those recommendations that we made, the other thing that we have to focus on is national unity. The Venezuelan government and opposition are very united on the SEBO question, you know? Very united. Right? They have varying degrees to which they believe this law should be passed or whatever. But on that question, they have one view. And so as Guyanese, we have to have one view. And the government has a role to play. We as the opposition have a role to play. And I want to be very clear on something. We take a lot of flak sometimes for the position that we take of supporting and talking about territorial integrity and sovereignty. But we must. We must. Because if we don't stand together, we don't have a Guyana to fight over. Do you understand what I'm saying? So this question about us standing together, that does not mean that the government will continue this irresponsible path that it is on of not sharing information with us. Because like I said in my last communication to you Todd, if you continue to do that, it will affect our capacity to bring critical support to you. It has to be a free flow of information. Certain things, of course, in the interest of national security can't be disclosed. But at the bare minimum, you have to keep us informed so that we can in turn inform the people that trust us for valid and credible information because they don't trust y'all for it. So absolutely, and as it relates to the PNC, and I think we we have time constraints now, Alan, by saying this. When the party was formulated, it was formulated with the notion of party groups as the foundation of the party. It was formulated for a bottom-up approach. And I wholeheartedly agree that we have to be able to revitalize our groups. We cannot deny, however, that everything rises and falls on leadership. And not only do we have to maintain our party groups, but we have to be a party that inspires people to say, come, join us. And if we want to be honest with ourselves, are we looking right now like a come and join us type crew? We are not. And so we have to change that. Because not only do we rely on membership to win an election, we rely on supporters, non-members, we rely on crossover voters. And so we have to transform ourselves into a party that will attract those people and keep their support. So we have a a a major task ahead of us. It will require hard solutions. It will require the retiring of personal agendas for the betterment of the party and the people that trust us to represent them. And I think we have one final question.
So before me, I'm going to indicate the persons who will be asking the questions because I know they've been waiting. We have the young man at his hand raised. We've noted you, the young lady as well, you are noted to ask your question, as well as this young man. I will entertain you, but please, in the interest of time, please keep it short, okay? So we will start with the young man. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable MPs, Walter, Chris here. We keep hearing that we are not getting any information from the government. However, we have these agents stating that we are entitled to receive information. But we have a commission of information and refuse to reveal it now. In America, under the Freedom of Information Act, we take our government to court so that people can get this information. Why can't we take the government to court to get the information to the people?
The the short answer is that we have must. We can, we absolutely must. That's the very short answer to the question. Do we have another question?
Good evening, Ms. Walter. My name is Voice from Mary. I'm a reminder, in the area, ten years almost. How I am able to speak to you currently? Right? If I have a situation in Guyana, I'm on highway, I have a angry, go retreat on the highway. And if I want to speak to somebody in the opposition, there is no representation in the area currently since 2020. But I'm in the area of travel. And and I took worse the highway, right? I speak to, every time I go around, when I speak to people, right? And there's nobody, hardly from Africa that we could contact, right? And I I speak out when I get to see the address, oh, we have to come this place. But when I need the highway to come to and to visit them, because of traffic and the constraint, I can hardly do half of what I get down to do, right? Another issue that I would like to talk to you is this constitutional reform that's happening, right? For myself and others, there's no clarity in what this is about. It seems as though it will be an ongoing issue influenced by what President said. He said, God is going to be a living organism where the citizens will direct it instead of the constitution directing citizens. If I if I think I got it right. My current issue is there's a lot of focus on Georgetown and the motion for the George. I think there's a big issue right now facing us in Georgetown because we're building a lot of hotels and so forth in Georgetown. A sewer system that I don't think anybody is looking at. And then there is Silicon City that people will be moving to. And we're moving all vegetation in Silicon City. And I'm telling somebody that's on the highway, and there is a system where you can find trees. And I have trees at my establishment. What's going to happen when you take up all of this vegetation and put it somewhere like Silicon City? I don't know if it's well thought of, living on the side.
Thank you for those three. You see, you put three in one, you know, but we will answer three very quickly. As it relates to Silicon City, Silicon City, I think, is a prime example of the backcourtness and incompetence of the government. Because we heard about Silicon City, they started clearing lands, two years now, digging roads. And then two months ago, Airfin Ali announces that the master plan in Silicon City has just been commissioned. So we build a hole and start digging roads for a whole city without a master plan. The government does not understand the importance of keeping our vegetation, you know, canopy and forest intact as far as possible and having it integrated into our development plan. This is why we promulgated the Green State Development Strategy. And if you go to that strategy, you will see that what it has as its focal point is is not only building the the ecosystems around low-carbon development strategies, but it goes beyond that. You go into the city right now and you'll see all of the millions. They've dug up all of the tree and 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 the trees and grass and they've kept it with concrete. And the city is getting hotter as a result of the loss of vegetation. You are right, we have an aging sewer system. And there is no investment to the degree of magnitude that is required for the maintenance and the expansion in terms of the new capacity for the sewer system. But the overarching problem is that there is not a sound developmental plan for the city. There's no plan for the strategic retreat of the city and what that will look like. And so this is why we have limited time to get our best minds around the table. And this is what we are committed to doing. Because look at the, you know, we call Guyana Little Dubai. But you look at that place 20, 30 years ago, it was sand and desert. And look at what they have been able to build because of vision. And not just vision, but sound development. So that is what we are committed to doing. On the issue of constitutional reform, yes, it will be an ongoing, it has been. If you look at the history of constitutional reform in Guyana, it has not been overnight thing. The 2006 amendments that we saw came after over a decade and a half of work. So there is no quick fix. It's a process that we have to go through. But I believe that as long as we have the political will on both sides of the political divide to get it done, that is a significant portion of the backlog. I'd be happy to chat with you after to, you know, go into the 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 rude events of how it will work. On the issue of contact information, we have a PR challenge, and I keep saying it. We have a PR challenge. I'm not going to sit here and attempt to to mislead you. We have to leverage the power of social media. There are PNC groups in Yara Cabra. There's a PNC group. I was in Kurukuru a few weeks ago on a fun day with a PNC group. And so the fact that you don't know that we are there means that we have to place greater emphasis on our PR. We have MB Niba Flubes, one of the most active and hardworking MPs that is responsible for that highway. And so it is very clear to me from the feedback that we have to make this information public. There is an office of the leader of the opposition, but you are right, it is in the city. And so we have to begin to look at how do we effectively decentralize our operations. But there are groups there that'd be happy to provide you with the contact information for the people there.
Good afternoon, Colonel Ranso. Welcome. This is Amabel Clement. This is Amabel Clement, for those who doesn't know me. I was at the last general election. The general council, I was at the last general council. I was at the beginning to the end. I never went to the bathroom, but I must have fallen asleep when they had the election to move the the next by Congress to August. We definitely sleep at that point. Now that August is set to be, now that elections is set to be in August without a specific time, August can, elections can be called the 15th of August, the second to last day of August, it costs a say, anytime you wait after August. As a CDR, how far are we intended to go? Or what can we do to figure out how we can get come down this election? But elections can be called the last, the second to last day, it is promised before the last day. But elections can be called the last, the second to last day, it is promised before the last day.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, you, you echoed what I said, that there is no date. By August is not a date. At the level of the CEC, what I can say is that members such as myself, we continue to push for a date to be announced. We have to have a date that is fixed. And there's no getting around that. And as members of the party, instead of feeling into dysfunction and saying, oh, Amanza, you're not going to declare, you're not going to declare, insist that we do the right thing and set a date. And once a date is set, a mechanism is kickstarted and rules of engagement are put in place. Because I want to be clear, after a congress is held, you're going to have to work together. Which is why I'm not prepared to entertain personal attacks on any one of my colleagues. I am not prepared to call any one of my colleagues an agent of the PPP unless I have him controversial proof of saying. And I have said this at the CEC to all at Sundry, that I will not countenance an attack on any member of the party. I have made it very clear, you won't hear it, because Amanza don't leak things to the media, whatever, because I believe what happens in house stays in house, but it's out there in our republic. So we will talk about it. We don't hear the other side going around accusing their members of working with the PNC, what nonsense. We have to stop it and we have to insist and demand from our leaders that they do better and that we act better. So yes, Amabel, I agree with you, a date has to be declared. And if you check the minutes of the central executive, you will see members like myself insisting that we got to do this thing and we got to do it the right way. Because I went by saying this, darkness can't drive out darkness. And if we're going to confront the PPP, we have to be different. Over there, one man decide who run, you know, when and who going when and who, who torn it is now and so on. No, 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 we are Democratic Party that subscribes to Democratic norms. And yes, democracy is a little messy sometimes. But as leaders, we have to understand that I can't attack my brother Raizdale because I can need him to do exactly what we're talking about here today. Challenge the Commissioner of Information in the court and to test the legal system. I can't attack a Barbara Lawrence because they got nobody organizing like Barbara Lawrence, none. I can't attack an Amnali. Because she in the PNC law and I am a liar. I can't attack an Orbinor. Because that is somebody that has been with the party since he was young. The point is, we have to put an end to the madness and the dysfunction. And I am saying that I can hold me accountable, that's all I'm responsible for. I am responsible for me. And as for me and my house, we have a feeling to that. We will necessarily be done and we done the right thing.
So we have one last question and that's it, because we got to go.
Uh, my name is John Thompson. Uh, I want to welcome Minister Brooklyn. I know this is not his first time, so let's welcome once again the Brooklyn and Narisi. I have six questions, but I'm only going to give one. Uh, after the 2020 combat with this election, there was a lot of talk of election reform. It came from the Cardassian threat, it came from the European Federation and from the ABC countries. Uh, but I'm seeing a lack of emphasis on, on a push for a new voters list. First of all, House to House registration, new voters list. And biometrics, the opposition seems to be liking when it comes to pushing for these, for these three, uh, uh, purpose, alright? For lack of a better word. Why is there not a push for House to House registration and new voters list and biometrics? Because I think this is the rich field, between winning and losing the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, John, for those very important questions. On the issue of House to House registration, there have been some legislative changes. And instead of House to House registration, there is now continuous registration that offers an opportunity for its own type of mischief. On the issue of biometrics, we have been on the forefront of calling for biometrics. And let me be very clear about something, we have to up the ante. And I'm waiting for the PPP hacks to come and say, oh, Walter and Narisi calling for spike and disorder. But I want to be very clear, we have to up the ante. We have to be able to communicate to Guyanese the importance of this issue. Now, there was a point in time when biometrics would have provided a solution. But if you are illegally on the list, biometrics is simply conforming an illegal person that had no business being there in the first place. So the answer has to be a clean voters list. We have to purge the list of the dead people. Nowhere in this world does it make sense that you have a voters list the same size of your population. But I want to be clear that it will not come without this struggle. And I'm going to make an observation here, and it's not intending to cause nobody discomfort if it does, accept my regrets, but it's the truth. When we struggled for local government reform, or local government elections, rather, you go back and you check those videos and you'll see every Tuesday, members of the party headed by David Gray, they're protesting every Tuesday. And so leadership is important. You know, you could tell what you want and cost you all you want, but people's out there up front with this placard, every religious choose their inner shine. And it was as a result of that struggle that they were pressured into some of the reforms that we saw when it came to local government. And that is the model that we have to return to. That is, we have to be willing to pound the pavement and pound the road and get out there and demand what is it that is rightfully ours. Because I want y'all to understand that the PPP has set the stage already, you know? The 2020 elections have shown us that they don't care how the votes get in the box. Want it in the box. This is why we have to watch them. This is why we have to watch them. But we also have to up the ante. The time for talking is gone. We have to be out there and we as leaders have to be out there, leading the charge, spreading the information and helping our people to understand just what is at stake. And again, it's not meant to disrespect or throw shade at nobody. I don't throw shade, I say exactly what I mean to say, as clearly as I possibly can. So you understand what I'm saying, we have to up the ante. And you here in the diaspora have a role to play. Write your congressmen and women, highlight these things. Because the USA, their eyes are on Guyana. The CIA, the rent to visit it, that's how, that's how up there we are now, right? And, and President Clinton was up in the Guyanese streets recently in the Al-Adels. Right? But it is an indication that we are not only having their notice, but their attention. And so you in the diaspora, you have a role to play because they are paying attention to us. You have a role to play. Write your congressman, write your representative, highlight to them the dangers of what is happening. And be sure to highlight to them that free and fair elections is conditioned on a clean list. And to the degree that they don't insist on a clean list, they are contributing to anyone else that could result from having to contest the elections because people don't have faith in the list. So John, thank you for those questions and I hope that I answered all of your concerns.
As we come to a, as we come to an end to the QA, I want to ask you simply, have all your questions been answered?
Yes.
Yes? No? Okay, we're going to do this again. You're going to come back and you're going to come with your questions, okay?
Yes.
And your curiosity though, being around as to what Amanza and that party is doing for Guyana.
Amanza, yes.
No, but generally speaking, are you intrigued as to what comes next?
Um, it's a start, it's a start. It's a start.
Are we confident that with Ms. Amanza Azir, as part of the Abu government, that we can see a positive change for our vision? That's why I did this call. Because a lot of the times we in the diaspora, we have no clue what is going on in Guyana. So we need to hear it from the worst as we can see. We need somebody who is at the table to bring the information to us so that we feel confident that Guyana is moving in the right direction or that there's someone advocating for us and speaking the things we are thinking here in the diaspora. So as a community here in New York, everyone should be encouraged to do more. There's a charge, there've been several charges here tonight. We need to be more involved and we definitely need to do more for Guyana. So thank you, thank you for your questions. And at this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Errol Lewis to give the bullet points.
Okay, thank you. No, I'm not Errol Lewis, but I just wanted to, to say thank you for coming out here. Thank you for coming out in your numbers to hear what is happening. And I want to leave a message with you, there is hope. There is hope. I see a path. And if it were not so, I would not have sent that to you. But it will require us to take hard decisions. It will require us to do some things that we have not done before. But always remember, there is hope. And we can do it, we must do it, and together we absolutely will do it. So thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you. Evidently, a whole lot of people are talking for the decades, they've been working for the party. So I believe that I need to tonight say that I've been around for 15 years as well. I don't know what I'm going to get for that. Full disclosure. Madam MP, I think, uh, this has been a very good meeting. Some words of comfort. Truth. Truth is very important. People always say that politicians don't always tell the truth. But time and again, you've actually been inspirational in telling it like it is. And that's a good thing. So I want to thank you on behalf of everybody here for making yourself available to talk to us and to letting us know the truth, which is always important. And for full disclosure, because I noticed over time, some people have been coming at you. And I sat quietly by, as usually I do. And then there were those who questioned your height. I want to say in our family, I've had uncles who stood at almost six feet six in our family. I stand up to say, Amanza is blood. We're like, Amanza is blood. My mother's water. So let everyone know that she's not only a myos cell. Not because we're white. There you go. So thanks again for coming out and talking to us. I also want to thank the organizers of this event, whoever they are. Mrs. George Lynn Wilson. I'm calling the lady, Mr. Randy Parry. And a few others that are not here. So seeing that they're not here, I'm not going to mention that it is. I also want to thank a gentleman that I haven't seen for a while, but he came and I noticed he's doing pro bono service. Had I known that, I probably would not have hired some people to come and, and, and do what they have been doing this afternoon. But it's all good. Mr. Charles Peters. I would like to thank Babo Vision for doing the recording for us. Appreciate him. And young artists for doing his bit in terms of us using the microphone and, and stuff like that. Buja. And of course, I can't leave out the man who's always available to go like Clinton, Hollins boy. Thank you. And of course, the people who asked to get us over here just now, we have to thank them as well, alright? So again, thank you all, we really appreciate it. And until the next time. Those are the organizers. Yes, we have some refreshments in the back, but who's interested? Okay? Oh, Madam Moderator, you've done a nice job. I'm sorry. You did a nice job and we thank, and by the way, this young lady is an attorney at law. So you need any help, this is America, you always want to lie. We don't pay for sue in this place. And the gas of folks, if you are playing the pool, we can get to them, we're ready for them. And of course, um, Mr. Burr, as usual, I heard, um... I heard the Madam MP telling him to continue to do a good job. And he'd been doing excellent, he don't need our help. So we will let him do his thing. And of course, he's not the only one that can't. And we didn't, nobody raised the issue. We gotta talk about this thing here for detaining people when they go home because they're speaking the government language. Madam MP, I am told that I'm gonna watch this. And that's why I'm not even attempting to go, I don't want nobody to embarrass me. But we can talk about that. And then the commonality, we need to give reports, you never know. There you go, unacceptable. I have another gentleman who speak the truth every week. He's trying to teach the police, help the police. You know, I saw me together with these boys and I too am disappointed sometimes in what I'm seeing happening on the ground. And then, it's coming. Alright? So retired Assistant Commissioner of Police, Paul Snow, decided that, look, I'm gonna go online and I'm gonna teach these people how to police. Keep on doing what you're doing, sorry, good job. DM President, Eric O'Woolworth, thank you for being here. Yourself in your beautiful wife. Appreciate it, everybody. And I think that is about it. Again, thanks everyone for coming out. This video is done. Adieu.